I'd like to call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of February 6, 2023 to order. I'll call the roll. Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow? Snow is absent. Stevens? Stevens is absent. Eight present. As you can see, Mayor Morris is not here this evening, so at this time, I would ask for a motion for a temporary chair. And who are you going to point? Okay, do I have a second? And McGee, second that. All those in favor, say aye as I call your name. Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, like they just heard me say apologize, it's been awhile since I've done something like this and I wasn't prepared, but appreciate the honor. So if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be here with us tonight and look over us and give us all wisdom and courage and patience. And thank you for everybody who serves the city and our country, we appreciate you. And I just ask the Lord to be with us tonight. Pray this in His name, amen. Okay, so that brings us to item three, that is public comment. Do we have anybody registered with the city clerk? It looks like we do, we have a, is it Deborah Willis? Okay, Ms. Willis, if you want to come up to the podium here.
Do I just start with what I want to say or do I have to?
If you just want to state your name for the record.
Deborah Willis.
That's fine.
That's fine, I live at the other end of the block, last house on Whitney. I'm here to oppose the marijuana dispensary that you're going to vote on to give a license to tonight. It's a horrible idea. It's a horrible, horrible idea. I know that we, the community needs money because of Chrysler shutting down the end of April. End of April, I'm alright, the end of the month, end of February, no, I said April. The end of the month, although I know somebody that works in security over at Chrysler and they said they're going till March, but whether it's February, March, the fact that they might shut down in the nearest future is a big economic blow to the city. I realize that, and the surrounding communities and the businesses and everything else. So I know that one of these reasons is that we need some other sources of income to replace what is not going to be coming in from Chrysler. Well, there are other sources of income. There's going to be, at that truck stop, that's going to be right up there off of I-90 on Genoa Road, which they've already got some construction going on there and they've got the fences and the plastic and you can see that they're starting to build a few things. I understand that there's going to be a big truck stop there, so they'll have a convenience store with food and gloves and lots of things, like at the truck stop at Huntley, if it's anything like that up there at Huntley and Moringo, there's lots of merchandise in those stores, there will be a sales tax on that. There will be a tax on gasoline, I understand there's supposed to be a hotel there also. There will be a hotel tax, because all hotel rooms are taxed. So I understand the city was supposed to get 3% of the tax revenue from those marijuana sales, well, they need to get their 3% from other things, because it does not do our community any good to be selling marijuana. I know the state says it's legal, I understand all that, and maybe I'm just too old fashioned, but it's just not good for the community, the people, and especially the young people that live here. Which are trying to form good morals, good habits, good ideas, it's not good, but I'm kind of getting, that's my next part B, I got to stick to part A here. Also, as far as income goes, which I think, like I say, is a big driving force here, we have the General Mills Distribution Center that is going to be opening on Irene Road this fall. We have the coal storage facility called Project Yukon, which was in the, that was in the paper on Jan, this was from the Register Star on January 29th, about that, that's going to be opening, a coal storage facility. And that's supposed to start building this year, and I didn't write down exactly where that's going to be, I think, if I remember it said in here, Appleton and Route 20, out in that direction, but that's still going to be money for the city. So besides the taxes that you're going to get from the convenience store at the truck stop, the hotel tax, the gasoline tax, you're going to have a big distribution center for General Mills at Irene Road bringing in more jobs, again, the article said how many jobs in each of these projects, that I didn't write down. I remember 700, I don't remember which facility that was, but there's going to be a lot of jobs and a lot of tax revenue from these industrial projects. We do not need money from marijuana. Okay, the dangerous things that I don't want marijuana here is, I just can't imagine a truck driver which needs to have a rest and is relaxing in one of those nice chairs, you know, and they need to be rested and relaxed, I don't want them driving a semi truck down I-90 if they're not in a good mental, physical state of mind as best they can be. We had, we took an AARP driver's course to lower our insurance premiums, because you get a little bit off of your insurance if you take one of those AARP courses. And our instructor said it takes three, three football fields, three football fields for a semi truck to stop. So in my mind, I can just imagine a truck driver that is relaxed in the chair and decided to smoke some marijuana before he gets in his truck, he gets in his truck and goes barreling down I-90, and you just hope to God you aren't in front of that truck when his judgment is a little off. He doesn't quite see that he needs to stop because you're too close, and he still needs three football fields, he doesn't see you on the side of his truck, you have some responsibility too, but he's a lot bigger than you are, and he's driving that truck, and you just hope to God that he's not a little bit high and his judgment is off and his timing is off and his reflexes are off. Because if you're the person that gets killed there, or somebody you love, somebody said to me, well, you know, it just happens, it just happens, until it happened to somebody you love. Your child, your son, your daughter, your husband, your wife, your brother, your sister, your best friend, you guys all have those people in your life. You wouldn't want that to be the person that that truck runs into and it's not in your life anymore. I have a friend who lost a child in a drunk driving accident, and she lives with this grief every day. And whether it's drunk driving or marijuana or whatever, you lose somebody you love, I've known her for years and she's not the same person. She gets through life, but she's not the same person, because as she says, there's a big hole and that grief never, ever really goes away. So I don't want that to happen to me or people I love, or I don't think you would want that to happen to people you love either. Also, gangs, I've heard, now, I don't know, I've just heard, so I'm not going to say that I'm 100% sure on these facts, I mean, this I am, because I've read in the paper and I talked to the mayor a while ago about something else, and he was telling me about the General Mills Distribution Center, so those I know are factual. Gangs, well, we know there's gangs in Belvidere, I had somebody I know that was robbed by the YMCA walking home from sips and sprinkles by gang members, but, so they're here, you know, whatever their names are, they're here. Well, now they can just come down the toll road and get right off at the truck stop and get their marijuana, and that's very convenient for them, but I'm not so sure it's good for the rest of us. And then there's the high school kids. You know, it doesn't take more than what, 10 minutes, I work on the weekends on ladies' houses that's disabled on the other side of Belvidere by the courthouse, and it takes me 10 minutes to get over there. So in 10 minutes, you can pretty much be from one side of Belvidere to the other, 15 maybe. So these kids, both at the old high school down by, you know, not far from my house on Whitney, or the new ones out there on South Bulwark Road, easy access for them. Well, sure, they can drive to Rockford just as well, it's not that hard to get to Rockford, my husband and I probably go to Rockford two or three times a week. So they could drive to Rockford and get it if they really wanted, but do we need to make it any easier for them? Do we really need to make it any easier for them to get marijuana, which, as a nurse, I can tell you, slows down their brain development, alters their judgment, is a gateway to other drugs, and is very bad for them. So I don't think we need to contribute to things that are bad for the young people of our community, who we hope would grow up to be outstanding citizens and do the right things, which is kind of hard if your brain is kind of damaged from smoking too much marijuana. So those are the reasons why I don't want that in our community and have easy access. And the money, I think I've given you some alternative ways that we can get our money back to make up for what we'll lose from Chrysler when they, when they idle their plant, whether it's February or March or whenever. But there's other revenues we can have, and we don't need to jeopardize the health and well-being of the citizens of our community and God forbid somebody you love that gets killed, or our young people, gangs and high school students, and probably even junior high and grade school, the way things are going these days. As my friend said, do we really, have we really fallen so low, whether it's gambling, the Hard Rock Casino in Rockford, or marijuana here, have we fallen so low that that's all we expect for ourselves and for our community? So I certainly hope enough of you agree with me that this does not pass, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willis, and I don't think we have anyone else registered tonight, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. Okay, thanks, John. We'll note that. That brings us to item four, approval of minutes, that's the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of January 17, 2023 as presented, can I get a motion to approve those? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion or changes to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, minutes are approved. Item five, public hearing, we have none. Brings us to item six, special messages and proclamations, we have none. Item seven, approval of expenditures, we also have none. So that brings us to item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. First up is A, the approval of minutes of Committee of the Whole, Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of January 23, 2023 as presented, can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion or changes to the minutes as presented? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you, minutes are approved. Okay, catching up here, that brings us to item nine, unfinished business. It's ordinance 607H, we have a second reading, it's an ordinance granting a zoning district change from GI, General Industrial District, to HI, Heavy Industrial District, the southwest, South Appleton Road and the railroad tracks. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderwoman Mahal, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, sorry, roll call on that, clerk, can you help me out with that, please?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Thank you, brings us to 9D, that is ordinance 608H, it's a second reading, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat titled Crosslink Business Park, Number 2 Subdivision. Can I get a motion for that one? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Flurry, should we have any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those are going to need a roll call again on that, madam clerk, if you would.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Thank you, that brings us to C, it's ordinance 609H, it's a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the HI, Heavy Industrial District, Crosslink Business Park, Number 2 Subdivision. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman Porter. Okay, we have any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in, we're going to need a roll call again, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, thank you, moving right along here, motion passed, thank you. Brings us to D, that's ordinance 610H, second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow daycare center, three plus children within the PO, Planned Office District, 2170 Pearl Street. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather and a second by Alderman McGee, we have any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, going to need another roll call here, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. Brings us to item E, which is ordinance number 611H, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat titled Final Plat 2 of Belvidere Retail Subdivision A, Replat of Lots 3, 4, 5, and Outlot A of Belvidere Retail Subdivision. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Porter, a second by Alderwoman Mahal, we have any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. Item F, ordinance number 612H, which is a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the PB, Plan Business District, 1874 Crystal Parkway. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, a second by Alderman McGee, we have any discussion on that item? Alderman Porter?
This is the, one that the other person discussed here on the public comment, I just had a question for the chief there, I guess, she was talking about the truckers and the problem with them. I don't see that as a problem myself, because, you know, all you go through to get a CDL and everything, and they're professionals, I would say it's probably pretty rare, but maybe chief would want to comment if he knows any statistics on that type of problem?
No, I don't have any statistics for you tonight. Anecdotally, obviously, if somebody is smoking marijuana and then driving, that's always a potential for someone to be under the influence and, you know, crashes do tend to be caused by individuals who are impaired. But in terms of being, being able to specifically cite statistics for truck drivers, I don't have that information for you tonight.
Anybody else have anything? Did you have something? Okay. Okay, then seeing none, we'll move along with the roll call on this item, please, madam clerk.
Porter?
No.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, motion passed. That brings us to item 10, which is new business. We have A, ordinance 613H, which is just a first reading, an ordinance amending section 10-80, renewal of liquor license of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. And we'll see that again, right? Okay, so that brings us to B, which is a resolution, it's number 2023-2, a resolution releasing certain executive session minutes pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/1. It's SEEK, not familiar with that, okay, do we need a motion to that?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion to that, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Flurry, have any discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, is it a roll call?
Yep.
A roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, resolution passed. Brings us to motions forwarded from Committee of the Whole, Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of January 23, 2023. Motions of public safety, it's usually Chairman Clayton Stevens, but co-chair, vice chair is Alderman, co-chair Flurry, whatever you want to be referred to. Mr. Flurry?
Thank you. Mr. Flurry's fine. Motion to approve a five-year agreement with Metro Paramedic Service Incorporated to provide ambulance services as outlined in the January 4, 2023 proposal, at an approximate annual cost of $1,659,733 per year, and a total cost not to exceed $8,298,665 for the term of the five-year agreement. City staff shall negotiate the final paramedic service agreement for a final approval of the city council.
Okay, so motion out of committee, do we have any questions or discussion on that?
I do.
City Attorney Drela has something.
I think Alderman Freeman's going to have something when I'm done, I want to give you guys an update. So I was a little concerned with actually putting in that not-to-exceed figure in the original motion, because obviously you're also tasking us for sitting down, discussing with, in this case, Metro Ambulance Company to try and figure something out. And lo and behold, our concern was warranted not doing that, because we misunderstood the proposal, the proposal that had the $1,659,733 was for the first year. In subsequent years, the thought is that they would then come back to us with whatever the cost increases were and we could talk about at that point. We are in the negotiations with them as we speak, but what we've, what they've agreed to be able to do is cap any subsequent year increases to 3%, that is, they'd never go up by more than 3%. So whatever's lesser, up to maximum 3% as an increase, which if you look at what's going on with our bargaining units and our own costs in-house, that's probably pretty reasonable. And as you know, and that's why the last sentence of this motion is here, this motion really doesn't mean much of anything, because once we have an agreement hammered out, it's going to come back to you for final approval anyway, and you'll see all those numbers again at that time, and be able to make a final decision as to whether or not they are the paramedic company we want to go with. I suppose, just for clarity, what I would suggest would be an amendment to strike the phrase "antle cost not to exceed $8,298,665" for the term of the five-year agreement. Either the way, we're going to come back with, to you with the new agreement, you're going to see it, but it just clarifies it from negotiation standpoint as we go forward. So that would be my recommendation, but either way, this is coming back to you in either one week or three weeks.
So does somebody want to make that amendment? Okay, so motion to amend by Alderwoman Prather, and did I see a second by Alderwoman Mahal? Okay, so do we have any further discussion on that, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Chairman Brereton, so I had a few questions, I don't, is there someone here from Metro representative tonight?
No, there's not.
So, as far as revenue, the city doesn't get revenue from this, correct? They get, they get the 1.6 plus city subsidy plus the 850,000 revenue, right? And then we get back the roughly 200,000 from the state, or we, we get the revenue?
We get the revenue.
Plus 200 from the state?
Correct, well, hopefully eventually. The way the agreement has been proposed by the city, that the council asked us to go back and negotiate with them, is that we will pay them a flat stipend on it, well, it'll be a monthly, but on a basis, so first should be that 1.6 million in change, yeah, 1.6 million in change. We would then hire a billing company and bill for all of our calls for service, and we would receive that revenue to offset the cost of running the paramedic services. And then in addition to that, after year one, starting year two, we can apply for the GEMT subsidy, and that does come from the State of Illinois, and I believe the chief guesstimated that to be around $200,000 in that second year.
Yep, Alderwoman Freeman, in your packet, I did have those revenue estimates, and the GMT is a federal program that we do split with the state, so a low-ended estimate of that would have been 400,000, of which 200,000 would come to us, and that is really the incentive for us to be the licensed provider of the service, because that's only available to municipalities and districts who provide that service.
So I'm just trying to figure out how much we need to actually budget for this, so if, you know, we give them 1.6, but we get roughly back a million plus, we are really only budgeting for about 600,000, and then the billing, was it 5%? Is like 42,000, so that comes off the revenues of 850,000, right?
Yep, in the packet last time that you guys had, I did have that separated and calculated. Once we start billing, obviously, the first three months, we're not going to receive revenue yet until it comes trickling in, so the year-one revenue estimated is about 650,000, and it would have no GEMT revenue at that point, because you have to provide the service for a full year before you can then even apply, so year one- So year one, you're looking right around a million dollars. And so if you remember back to last week, if you find that slide with the net costs. Now, I did create information here with you or for that with the net costs, assuming the 3% increase and a 3% increase in revenue over a 10-year span because just for, to, to look at that, to see how that would look between the different options we had. So again, that's just based on the estimates we received and the revenue estimates were from lifelines, actual data from 2021. And so that's how I extrapolated all that. But that's, that's in your packet from last time and you'd look at the one that was listed as a net cost.
So Alderman Freeman, you're accurate that we do have to budget for that, call it a deficit. That's one of the reasons why we have this getting going so early. So the finance director can try and budget for that in the upcoming year. The first year will be the biggest hit because there'll be that lag time before revenue starts coming in and we will not be eligible for the GEMT. Subsequent years will be a little bit better. Go ahead.
Uh, oh.
The, excuse me, and I didn't bring any water tonight, I apologize. So my mouth's getting dry. The estimated year one cost to the city for the metro choice is $1,036,510. And then the second year would be 675,000 and third year would be 685,000. Fourth year, 695 and fifth year, 705,000. But understand, those are projections and, and rough estimates of a lot of variables going to that and those were simple, here's the 21 data, here's a 3% increase year over year on, on both revenue and then same with the cost if they, if indeed did come back next year at that 3%.
And then, and then I just wanted to clarify, I think I was a little confused maybe on the, the payment that they get. You said like they get, they, they do like, okay, everybody that gets the ambulance ride is $2,500, say. Now, my insurance pays 1,000, your insurance only pays 300. As with any provider, whether it's, you know, your doctor, your dentist, or I would assume the ambulance, is the patient not on the hook for whatever the insurance, whatever they may have, doesn't cover? Don't you get an invoice for that?
That's something this council will have to decide. And we're going to be coming back to you with some recommendations. Perhaps the earliest is coming Monday at committee or perhaps a little bit later on. But because we will be the billing, call billing agency, we'll have a, we'll subcontract that out. We will establish the rules for the amount that we will charge for an ambulance call, the amount that we will accept as payment in full. Some, some cities and villages, what they'll do is they will only charge above and beyond 30 party payers. Obviously, you know, your private insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, they all receive that. But some communities, they don't charge the residents for a call for service, but they do charge non-residents. Some communities take whatever they get from third-party payers and write off the rest. Some cities will send out our special districts as well, fire protection districts. They will send out several bills and hopefully somebody pays them. If they don't, they just write off, write it off. And there's a very few communities that will actually send those matters to collections if they're not paid. Either through their in-house council, and I did that for years for a fire protection district and I hated doing it, but that's beside the point, or a, a third-party collection agency. I will tell you, if you get 25 to 30 cents on the dollar through those collection attempts, you're doing very well.
Thank you. That's all I have.
But we'll have, the short answers, the council will have to decide those things.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on the amendment on the floor then? Okay, seeing none, then all those in favor of the amendment, do we need roll call on that?
Yep.
If you would, please?
Brereton?
Aye.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, so that passes and then I think we need to vote on the motion as amended?
We do.
All right. And now you threw me off, you know, spread. Do we need a motion for that or just vote on that? Okay, all right, so, thanks. We have any more discussion on that before we vote on the amended motion? Okay, so all those in favor, when your name is called, if you'd say aye. Those opposed, nay?
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, so motion, amended motion passes. Unless we have anything else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Fleury, a second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Meeting is adjourned at, what was it, 7:34?